You know, and all our infrastructure, which is great, but this little stuff, this looms out there that eats at me. I came down 100 Avenue this morning, two miles north of 169. On the CRP ground, which I could go right from here to the FSA office. There's a whole piece of CRP ground out there, just full and full of giant ragweed. One of the worst weeds we've got fighting, and we go by there every fall. That stuff's gone to seed, and it's just a big CEO giant ragweed. That shouldn't be that, but that's what we have going on, and we're doing it wrong, folks. We need to take care of the simple things first before we worry about all this big stuff every time, so. So anyway, that's what I went, my concern is looking up in my area. I'd be glad to go with you, and I said, let's get some of these guys back off these road ditches and start getting with grasses and stuff. So we can get some of that drainage. We talked about drainage, well, any guy comes in and buys a farm, what do they do? First thing they do is fill in the road ditch so they can get their big equipment in. I don't know if legally they're supposed to contact the county and think, I don't know if it's done or not. But half the, you know, half mile stretch of road ditch, ditch can't do much drainage down any tiles. And because they're all plugged up with big driveways, no tiles underneath them, so. That's what I was complaining about. I'm gonna drive around, keep looking, I might be back again. But we got to stand up to some of these big guys that want to farm all the farms around here. They don't want to take care of the weeds and it makes it look like unsightly for everybody, so. Kyle, I'll be visiting with you, so.
Can I get your number here?
Yeah.
Shane?
What's that?
Public discussion, any of you guys?
That's it. I came here to listen about District TD7, what's happening with that. I'd like to find out how that's all working and what transpired, and I guess is why I'm here.
We lost a case in court. Do you want a copy of the opinion from the judge? Lee, you've got a copy of the opinion with you?
Yes.
The judges, you want to give it to? Let Shane, or Gary and Shane and Mike look at it?
I'll take your copy, I can give it to you. Just for. Where would you go about getting one of those?
Just to the office office and grab one. Marc will run you a copy.
Because I saw it was on the agenda, just the.
Yep.
Really like to know how that all transpired, is. That's what I'm here.
You too, Mike.
Just curious.
Lee, do you have anything for public discussion?
TD7, uh, gonna spread that belt today, or discussions on the agenda.
Yeah. You guys got anything for public discussion? Okay, what's that? Do I have a motion approved, agenda claim? Do I have a motion approved, agenda claims in minutes for June 21st and claims for today? So, motion by Plath, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Stecker. Any discussion on any of the claims? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Do I have a motion to approve the handwritten claims for care connection with a fund balance of $10,000 in the amount of 117,0217?
So move.
Motion by law.
Requested by the state, we had to do this in this one.
It's not actually the fund balance of $10,000, it's the fund balance of the 10,000.
10,000.
10,000, oh, sorry.
I'll sign it.
Second by Mr. Stecker.
Donnie.
Any discussion on it? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously. So, grew up to you on EMS administrator.
Morning.
Good morning, Phil.
Um, don't have a lot today. Um, just kind of a quick update. The advisory council, we have been meeting, started to meet. Um, basically so far, we've just kind of been getting the new people up to speed where the system's been, how we did the needs assessment a few years ago. It's kind of a lot of history. Gonna start kicking off here after the 4th of July, meeting with better services in the county and. Keep progressing there, and we can come up with. So that's going, um, also been having some conversations with the hospital and stuff too, council. Could meet with them as far as our contract we have with them or transfers, so. Everything's going on, great laws and sports live weekend, we have bait coming up, so. I'm busy trying to get everything ready there, probably heading out there tomorrow to get some stuff set up and straight back and forth all weekend, but. Um, parades, part of the advisory council, want to get our name up, Sioux County EMS out, so. I did do a parade last weekend, get a new parade on 4th, as the city events come up here this summer. Just kind of make appearance, not quoting anything, not advertising anything, just Sioux County EMS, just to. Everybody see us that we're out, not asking for a vote, like that, just to start a name home. Uh, the other big thing coming up is we have four state inspections this year, and we also have a new state inspector, so it's been a challenge. So we have three inspections tomorrow, um, we have one inspection on Thursday, so besides getting ready for bait, trying to get ready for that. Kind of running pretty hard the last couple of weeks, get through it. So that's the main thing that's going on right now, um, if you guys got any questions for me.
You're still trying to hire people, getting.
Still trying to hire people, um, we're going to Joe and trying to get some new ads out, more commercial type ads than just paper ads. Get some stuff out like Facebook, some live stream kind of things, it's going to fall that way. Got a few, couple more periods, so that's been helping fill the gaps, be nice to get a couple more full-time hired.
Let you off pretty easy today, so.
Yeah. If you take a stop, you know, Matt, I'll wear me.
Hey.
Thanks, Phil.
Don, you're up.
Um, the last two months, I guess nothing really earth-shattering to speak of. Housing and utility needs continue to be the primary issue, community action spend is funding, so. I should lie referrals are to them, and they're able to take care of it. But there has been an increase, I guess, in food and gas options. Again, just using the entry, and our gas is very limited, maybe $10, $15 if they need to get someplace, but it's just not for ongoing consumption, or we'd never have. I do have some grocery cards that will be given us at Christmas, I can help with that, but again. Just trying to remind them that good stamps went back to the normal rate, and we can't check them, they were raised to COVID high level, highest of all. Down. Other than that, I did put some things as far as, um, the resources, that I attended the Iowa employment conference in April. Um, that was secondary roads completed, open enrollment, and then organized the files. Um, we've had two new employees, I guess, this recording period, and then we'll be having a few retirements and hires coming up this summer.
Anybody have any questions for Don? Quiet bunch today.
I was gonna say.
Thanks, Don. Have approval of FY 2223 appropriations, appropriations resolution, 06282201. Seeing your iPads, everybody had a chance to look at it.
Last week of this fiscal year, so we have to do our appropriations that were set for fiscal year 2223. So that resolution is the summary of all those appropriations.
Any questions or comments on the resolution and the budget?
I'd move approval of 06282201.
I have a motion by Mr. Plath, do I have a second? Do I have a second, Casey? Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Casey.
Yes.
Los.
Yes.
Plath.
Yes. Yes. Motion carried unanimous. We have a motion for approval of fireworks for the bait of Iowa. Everything seems to be in order, is there any discussion? If there is none, do I have a motion to approve the fireworks permit for bait? Motion by Mr. Stecker, do I have a second by Mr. Loss, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimous. Decision, discussion to appoint Plum Creek trustee township.
Champion of those hands, she needs to retire.
And we have KJ Hendricks. Eric, how do you say it?
Eric.
Eric, okay. Is there a motion to approve? I'd move to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Casey, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, Marc's gonna bring him. Appoint Burt Township clerk to fill a vacancy. And Vicky Matson will be becoming a clerk for Burt Township, filling the position that Dale Pearson had. Do I have a motion to that effect? I'll move to approve, do I have a second, second by Mr. Stecker, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimous. Marc is going to bring your number, drainage.
Yep.
You want to come up with it? Okay.
We're good.
Good morning, everyone.
We are up to the Lead Guard Windpower LLC decommissioning plan, Doug.
Pardon me?
We're up to the LLC decommissioning plan.
Okay. Uh, I think this was put on by Eric Veronis, so Eric, do you want to visit, I guess?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, good morning, separate report. Um, my name is Eric Veronis, I'm the project developer, or one of the project developers of the Lead Guard Windpower project. Um, Duke Energy has resubmitted a decommissioning plan that accurately reflects the number of turbines and the. Uh, foundations, all of the infrastructures that is being installed up at Lead Year. Um, it is required in the Sioux County Wind and Energy Conversion System Ordinance that Duke Energy update. The decommissioning plan, if there are any changes to the design, so we got updated that. Uh, Mr. Stecker had requested that we update the current rates, um, for that decommissioning plan, and so we took a look at that last month. And STANTech has, uh, updated the plan to reflect current rates, um, yeah, and. So that's what is on the agenda this morning. Um, I also just wanted to mention that the decommissioning plan will be revised and revisited again. Uh, it's required in the Sioux County Wind and Energy Ordinance that the decommissioning plan is updated every five years. So this will be updated in five years as well.
Have you done that in the past on other projects, updating it every five years, or?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Stecker, any questions?
I guess this should probably be an easy one, but the, um, depth of removing the foundation, I saw last night, Eric went over it again. I saw in there it has 36 inches, I was thinking that was four feet, but I could have been off. Is it, was it three feet before in our last plan?
Uh, I can go back and look, I was sitting four foot also.
I thought it was four, but I could be wrong, I just noticed it was 36 inches in here, but, no.
I'm, I'm not exactly sure on that, Kyle.
Doug, do you have the old one there?
Uh, three, section 3.4 of the approved plan is expected in circular spread, forty foundations will be used for the project wind turbine. I mean, these foundations are predominantly located underground, and foundation design will likely consist of a solid reinforced circular concrete pedestal, approximately four feet high. Entire foundation system.
And I don't think there's any requirement or.
All components to a depth of 48 inches will be excavated, you know, and removed.
The torque. So yeah, so that'd be, and I just thought that last night, going through it again, but.
We can, uh, Doug, are you reading from the white ordinance or the decommissioning?
That's a decommissioning plan.
Right.
December 16, 2020. This does say 36 inches, we need to be removed 3.4, and one dated to 2020.
It should say 48 inches, right? Well, yeah.
I'd like to see that.
I don't have the ordinance with me.
I don't, I don't think there's any requirement in our ordinance for that, off the top of my head, but.
I know all the installations are, of, all the installations for any of the underground cables and the foundations, all of those are up to code by the county ordinance. So all of the cables are dug at a depth of 48 inches. Um, I don't think there is any requirement, um, for removal. However, all of the cables will be removed completely, right?
Yeah.
Um, the foundations themselves, they're, they are at a depth of about 15 feet, and, uh, my colleague Mario. Maybe you can speak to this a little bit about the depth of the foundation of the turbine? Yeah, do you know how?
Good morning, everybody, I'm the site manager for the Duke Energy. Yeah, so yeah, the foundations are four feet deep, and it's very wide, all about the foundations.
Yeah, foundation of the turbine.
Yeah, they're four feet, that is, uh, spread with foundation, they got a pad, and so that is exposed, uh. Our corporate record is probably a 12 inches exposed out there above the ground, so that's, that's what we have. The foundation, the depth is four feet.
Yeah, I mean, it does say your good collection system, so that's the entire cables and all that, I, that's fine, but. The 36 inches, I did, like I said, I caught it last night, but I began, so.
And, I mean, we can, we could make this, the revision.
Could we get that amended to be at four feet again, like the previous one?
Yeah, if it was previously at 48 inches, um, is there a way? Could we, I mean, could we, I'm just wondering if there's a way to move forward, but approve.
I mean, I could.
Change with the change.
I could see that we'd approve it conditional to getting a updated one at 48 inches within whatever time period you'd like, but yeah. I mean, and then it would be automatically done when it's submitted, wouldn't have to come back to the board.
Right.
If that's acceptable.
Let me, I'd rather get a, get ahold of the head of construction for Duke Energy, put him on the phone, Kyle, would that be?
Yeah, go for it.
His name is Mike Braun.
He's the other, he's the other one, we had Matt was, right?
That's right, yes, sir. I don't want to step on his toes, this is really his territory, let him get a call. One more time.
If you'd like to keep trying them or whatever, you could probably go out to Hall and we could come back to this.
That'd be great, I appreciate it.
That's my thought, anyway.
Yeah.
You're.
Once you step back in and I get ahold of it.
Yes, sir.
And you can come back to us.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yep. Construction in the right of way, Doug.
Uh, there is no request for construction of the road right away today.
Doug, we had Dale Pearson in this morning for public discussion, and he was concerned about people farming in the right of way and stuff. I've got his number here, I could share that with you afterwards, but.
I think he, he was just as concerned about spraying ground up in the right of way and killing the grass.
Yeah. Ragweed, which is not on the obnoxious weed list, we can't do enough about the ragweeds, we're done.
Um, I guess what is, what is he concerned about exactly? People farming the right of way, people's independently spraying the road right of way.
Combination.
And the road, road ditch not getting mowed on top.
Oh, he was concerned about the blacktop between Lone Rock and Burt, wasn't it? He mentioned that.
He can certainly call me, I guess, maybe you should get, maybe you should have him call mine, our phone, I guess.
I gave him my number and I got his here, so just.
I mean, with road issues, they can certainly call us, where is this phone number?
Uh, I have it written down here, I'll give it to you. I already put it in my phone.
But yes, ragweed is not a obnoxious weed, however, we, there are situations where we had BMW spray ragweed for us.
Uh, he was talking about ragweed was in CRP.
CRP. Yeah, but he said he.
That's the decommissioner.
He was one of the NRCS, I just felt that.
That giant water hump, which you can't do enough about water hump either.
So is this road issues or is this CRP ground?
No, he was talking about.
He was talking about roads initially.
Farming the right of way and spraying.
We have staked road right away this spring, and we're trying to, but. If you want Sioux County to enforce road right of way and farming of road right of way, we're gonna need to have another survey crew. At least one more survey crew, because. That, that is, that is more than a full-time job, so if, if the board wants me to do that, we can certainly begin. We need support from the board, because as soon as we start staking. Road right of way, because people are farming it, if people farm it, do you want us to go out and mow crops? Destroy crops that are in the road right of way once they're planted? Do you want us to harvest crops that are in the road right of way?
But something.
We have, we have. Trying to think of how many acres of road right of way we have.
A lot. But if you don't care.
So, I, I hope, you know, that.
There's.
You know, I, I don't know what to, what to say unless I know for sure that you guys are going to back it.
Well, there, there's also the issue of the junkyard west of Soy City that, um, I got more complaints on that here in the last couple of days, so.
Well, we're talking about farming road right of way right now, because I'll guarantee you when we go out and. The, at least the person that I think Mr. Pearson's referring to. There will be contacts.
As he said, he's farming so much of the ditch that, uh, like BMW can't even drop their sprayer boom and spray the bad weeds in there, because it's so terrible now, is what he's claiming.
I don't know, I drove that little road between Burt and Lone Rock, and I didn't see anything that was real terrible.
BMW is spraying south of Highway 18 right now.
Yeah, he said it would come and they would be, they couldn't get their boom all the way, because the farmer spraying round up, killed the grass and all the rubbish.
And that's, that's a situation, I don't know how you, how you want to handle that, because that's, that's a different situation, that's where. Somebody has sprayed the road right away, killed all the grass, and now all there is weeds growing.
But he said.
They're not necessarily farming the road right away, but.
Cause he said they sprayed when it's too windy, so it blew up into the ditch. We can't tell them they can't spray.
Yeah, I, I don't know how you want to handle that. And there are situations, I can, I can take into situations like that.
Cause he said you guys ain't mowing the road ditch up there either. Gravels, you don't mow, right?
Yeah, we, we mow gravel.
You don't follow the gravels?
Yeah, I, I don't know where up there is exactly, but.
He was, he said about that, was he?
He riled off a couple of different roads, but I didn't get them written down, but I was bringing, just bringing it to your attention, we don't need to discuss it.
Can we go back to, uh, the LLC decommissioning plan a minute, Mr. Lons is back?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I did speak with Duke Energy and that is fine. Um, so if we can move forward, uh, we will have a revision to you all, you know, right away, basically.
And it will be for.
Yes, sir.
Then I would make the, the motion to approve ending the revision with the. Change to forty-eight inches for the power depth.
We're going to agree.
You second it, Mr. Lons, or would you like to read back the motion, please?
Approval of the updated I T R wind power LLC decommissioning plan, pending revision forty-eight inch depths.
Okay.
I would put a removal of the concrete.
For.
And.
For.
For the concrete at forty-eight inches.
So you're saying removal of concrete at forty-eight inches or?
Yeah, that's the, that's the foundation. It says partially remove wind turbine foundations to a minimum depth of thirty-six inches and backfill sites in this one.
Okay.
So the thirty-six would be changed to forty-eight?
This is in what section, Kyle?
Um, in my thing, it's page nine of twenty-one, it's two point three. Decommissioning schedule about middle.
Okay. Okay, right, yep, got it.
So Kyle, I added at forty-eight inches instead of thirty-six inches.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any more discussion on the motion? Everybody understand the motion? There are no more discussion, I would call for a roll call vote, please.
Second?
Yes.
Casey?
No.
Boss?
Yes.
Platinum?
Yes.
Jerk?
Yes, motion period four to one. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
May, just a second, Eric, will. Will there be a new decommissioning report submitted to zoning so that I'll know everything?
He'll, he'll give you the amended report, correct?
Yes, sir, yeah, there'll be a revised decommissioning plan of that, and then also submitted to you, your office, Doug, and the county auditor as well.
Send it, send it to the board, too.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Or I can forward it.
However, it works.
We won't keep that on the agenda if everything else is the same, but should be aware of it, yeah.
There are two, there. There's probably multiple references to that, I. I would have thought Samantha. Stanton, excuse me.
Right.
Would have kept their language in the. September sixteenth, twenty twenty version and just changed number of turbines at the cost.
Yeah.
We will. Take that. By God, Cecil.
Yeah, so we will revisit that as soon as possible.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, dear Mr. Chairman, thank you for the number.
Anything else, Doug?
Uh, sure. We have one employee that is going to be on a medical leave for twelve weeks due to medical condition. We're gonna be using full-time, or excuse me, part-time employees to keep, make sure that his work, his roads are. Maintained, and it looks like I got a mechanic, an accepted position. His name is Josh Kelly, he is going in next Tuesday, July five. Um, he's actually right now a mechanic for Benton County. Works on same types of equipment that Sioux County has. He grew up north of Clarion, so he's gonna be moving back a little bit closer to his home. So kind of good thing there, maybe I might have a summer help person. Hired by tomorrow, let's see, I got an application yesterday, I just need to talk with this person. Uh, we have a bait coming up, we are out right now getting roads, trying to keep roads rocky intersections, rock cur, off the curves, different things like that. Our road department, we're getting ready for some H M A patching, trying to keep intersections, we're really having problems with intersections on state roads. When, when state resurfaced them, they went back into county road right of way. Or they went back to county, into the county road, I should say, it's still in state road right of way, however, part of. Maintenance, it's county's responsibility, so we are trying to get a bunch of those locations taken care of. Uh, Big Six River Bridge, East one sixty-nine, they are building up the east road, moving the channel. Should be, hopefully, the end of this week, if things be different up there. Fairville Road, great, they're actually ahead of schedule. They are doing soil stabilization, they thought that they would be finished with soil stabilization, stabilization July eighth, according to their critical path. And, um, it looks like the end of this week they'll be finished, so they are ahead of that. After the soil stabilization, they place a subbase and then they put out their PC top pavement control and then they pave. Uh, the problem is they're gonna be so far out in front of, uh. With their schedule, their paver is not going to be able to come in right when all the subbases put in. But people will be able to drive on it, it'll be a stable subbase and they'll have to maintain it, but they are moving really well up there. Uh, down on the south end, the Irvington Bridge, they're, um, they were trying to get one of the. Peer supports out yesterday, I don't know if they got it out or not. Uh, the Highway one sixty-nine bridge, they're still working on the substructure. Lead Yard Wind Power, they're receiving components for that project. Sioux Wind Energy, they are, um, improving some roads, working on their laydown yard. You're watching that, the roads, they're getting the roads built up very well. Our road department is working on the front side of the maintenance facility up at Lead Yard. They're gonna be doing, I think, Lead Yard and Benton of this year. But we have a couple of, uh, employees who are working on that, replacing the wood up on top. Uh, next week, the, that smoothness deviation, gambling on B fifty-eight, the east end, they're gonna be working on that, so.
Will you not grind it?
They're grinding it and then they'll be putting a seal on top of it. But it will cause traffic disruption while they're working there, so hopefully the traveling public will, will cooperate with that.
Is that gonna make a difference because of the detour, because a lot of people are taking that road now instead of Irvington Road?
Um.
I do what you gotta do, though.
Yeah, the, the, it's not part of the official detour, I don't think, official detours are centered blacktops. Uh, then also to this afternoon, I'm meeting with representatives of Hartland Greenway Project, that's the CO2 capture up north. I think, uh, Kyle is going to that as well, Chris up. Um, we have stakes in road right of way. U P Railroad, we gotta get that work going up the, up north. And. That's obvious this way, please.
On the radio, they're saying south of Wesley, you're just gonna patch in all those limestone spots?
Correct, uh, we replaced some cross pipes south of Wesley on our fourteen last fall, getting ready. They were separated, so we're getting ready for the resurfacing there. Um, talking, we actually had bid items in the resurfacing project to, for the contractor that's doing the resurfacing to. Do that, uh, work completely, however, after. After the project was let, we found out rag bribe was coming in. Talking to the contractor, they're not gonna start until after rag bribe, so we chose to just go ahead and get those patches in. So rag bribe riders will be able to ride off of them safely.
Anything else, Doug?
I do not have anything.
But he got anything else for Doug?
Scott talked to you about that big driveway Simpson wants.
He did not.
Talked to you later about it then.
Okay.
He wants to move that one right with the, uh, they got that eighty, uh, ranked north of, uh. Substation on the east side of the creek. That side creek that runs north and south along there, they got a full in along the creek and try to turn that corner with a twenty-four wheel plan and they can't do it. Cause they normally want to use Bristol's field, well, Bristol no longer farms, it's so awesome.
That's private interest.
Yeah, so he.
That's not a road interest, the one going over the creek.
Yeah.
That's a private interest.
That's all private.
So that was originally, whoever that owner was, that was put in. Nineteen ninety or so, they purchased all the pipe, they put it in themselves, and so, and I guess. About this guy, Richard, Richard purchased that land.
He's got that eighty in there, yeah.
I know where to talk to this. Solid idea.
You got nothing else for you, Doug?
Oh, the interest to the laydown yard, is that going by, uh, Summit Hog Say off the Irving blacktop, or is that coming off the center blacktop and going?
They are working on. My understanding is they're, they're supposed to be coming off of the center pavement, pavement that's centered.
So they'll come on the south road?
Right.
And then going over.
South, going north, it divises there, turning to divises going north. If they're bringing it in from the west. If they're bringing that again from west, one of their plans. I was gonna head out there and see what's going on and. I didn't know, we could have a question.
I came in on the Irvington Road and, uh. Week ago it wasn't done, but this morning every, uh, entrance to the house was zapped.
Yes, we. We were just discussing dust control because we gotta get ready for another application. It's just a lot of traffic all over the place, we got Lisa and I got caught.
I think that's the main detour, is that the.
Well, the, again, the, the official detour is, it's not the official detour.
No, it's not, but I know I.
For whatever reason.
Right, I like to see a lot of cars going around the corner.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We will go into discussion on DD seven, all assessment schedule. Sell.
The sell, sorry.
Sell.
Good morning, this is Dave.
Yeah, Dave, this is the Sioux County Board Supervisors and we have.
Yeah, good morning, how are you today?
Handful of, uh, landowners here, uh, wanting to get the information about DD seven and, uh, the ruling.
Well. The, the ruling was adverse to the county, the county's not, based on our last meeting, we weren't gonna go ahead and appeal that.
Did anybody hear that? Oh, we're not gonna appeal the decision, and they decided that it would be futile, that you wouldn't win on a, on appeal. Have any comments from anybody on D seven? Any questions for the attorney?
I, I, I'm very novice to this, so just learning, I'm not sure where my place is to talk about this, I'm trying to understand it. As a person went and destroyed his area of ditch, correct? And what, what transpired to make sure that happened, everybody knows that happened, correct?
Correct.
Why? How, how did it not move forward in him taking care of his portion of the ditch? And he agreed to having it, that he knew, right, that he did it?
He, he knew he did, yes. Do you want to give a summary of the, the judge's ruling?
Well, we, we went through this a little bit last week, the bottom line was that the judge found that there wasn't appropriate notice under the statute. Um, I was a latecomer to the party, filled in for Mr. Lips who had a health problem. And the, um, we provided copies of the ruling. And the short of it, there's two factors, two things, one is that we couldn't assess attorney fees directly to the landowner. And also that the landowner didn't have the proper notice under the statute. So those were the, the two primary issues. And the judge made a very thorough ruling and we're not recommending, and the, uh, board, as I understood in our last meeting, decided not to appeal that based on Tom Lips' recommendation of mine. But it's, it's a futile appeal, so that's where we're at with it.
And what, what notice was he talking about? I mean, we hired, we had attorneys that, uh, you know, hired early on in this to take care of, so what notice was the, was the judge talking about?
The judge didn't feel that the notice was appropriate to give this person due process and, and the, and following up on it. We have a different opinion, but I, this was long before I became involved, and again, I was covering for Mr. Lips who. Mr. Lips and I came into this after the facts were already in motion on this. And I, I gave a thorough analysis to the board, to my client, um, for you folks last week and, and our closed session, because it was, you know, litigation matters. But the short of it is, the judge made a thorough ruling, we are not recommending appealing, and, you know, based on the board's. My understanding of board decision last week, we're not appealing that decision because it's futile. And, you know, going forward, we're gonna have to review or should review how the notices are given. This was a very unusual set of circumstances, and so I'm not being critical of anybody in the equation, it just was a very unusual set of circumstances, um.
The original attorney was Eric Idy, and he was an attorney that we had hired for windmill projects. And he's the one that sent the first letter, and then I think the firm went away completely and he went to Des Moines and no longer would represent us.
And the letter did go out to the landowner, but the court found that it wasn't sufficient, that the, that the notice was not sufficient to give. The landowner the appropriate notice that he would be responsible for all these costs.
Please.
So when was, so when did you talk to or involve your first attorney at the very beginning?
Yes, in seventeen, September twentieth of seventeen.
And according to the ruling, he was supposed to be notified even before that, is that correct? Of one of four sixty-eight, one forty-nine.
David, can you hear the speaker in the audience?
I couldn't hear anything.
You wanna come up and, and talk to me?
My question is, when did they, when did they first, when did you first talk to an attorney about this project? The judge uh just talked about the failure of course sixty-eight, one forty-nine, which sets the parameters for the letting, not going, that's where we failed, so we, when was the first time you contacted attorney? This project started way back in sixteen?
Sixteen, we sent the first letter in sixteen from the board of supervisors saying that he had sprayed the ditch. And that he had caused erosion. But we didn't have an attorney there yet.
Okay, so the attorney really wasn't till after the.
No, it was in seventeen then the attorney.
Yeah, they're, they're actually, they're hoping here.
Well, first we determined there was damage and you were out there.
Yeah.
I was out there and there was damage.
There was damage. And, and the engineer, I don't think this was uh, the evidence was.
Yeah, we took pictures, we had plenty of pictures.
There was plenty, there was plenty of, it was, we really lost our procedure.
Yeah, we had pictures from fourteen and fifteen too where he's.
Where back when we went back then.
Yeah.
Well, then my, and my question is this, was, was that, was that in court, was that? I mean, I, we had no knowledge.
Yeah, from what I understand, it wasn't that he did damage.
It wasn't, it was purely, we lost on procedure.
Right, we didn't lose on that he did damage, that was evident.
Basically, he wasn't notified or given, I went to the code, he wasn't notified of uh the, or he wasn't given three days to correct it?
Yeah, but how do you correct it after today, that's, I don't agree with the judge's ruling and you probably don't either, but it's the ruling we got.
Okay, but basically, I'm looking at, where do, where does airs and emissions come in because we didn't follow the code of Iowa? The drainage laws. And that's what he, the judge referred to, Timmy, in the ruling. So that's, I mean.
I don't claim to be an expert, that's why we hired an attorney.
Right, but it looks like maybe we looked at the law after the fact. And so I, that's.
Well, I don't know that. In, in fourteen and fifteen, we never sent a bill to Tom and Paul, but first we sent was through the attorney, so.
Yeah, was this, was this a second incident or was that, there was a first and second or a third or a tenth or a three incident?
This would have been the third incident.
So that's, kind of my question comes down, down to, we didn't hire an attorney when we should have? Or he gave you poor advice or no advice at all? Or when did we?
Well, was it all three above, was it part of it though he had the wrong code number section in there?
Yeah, but that was, that was just.
It had to be, I had, it had also.
It was a nine instead of an eight.
It was a nine, seven, eight, and that's just, that's just the basic, when it comes to the code itself, it was one forty, I think was correct, you know? That file didn't, you know, and it just, what I guess what I'm asking is, or what I'm looking at, we're gonna get a pretty hefty bill here.
You know?
For nothing that the district did. You know, nothing. We were kinda kept in the dark through this whole lawsuit thing and they drug out for years.
It didn't help that he died and they had an estate to deal with.
Those are all situations that.
And then our attorney got sick and went to Rochester and.
Well, I noticed we had three different attorneys.
Right, because Mr. Lips, well, the first place we couldn't. Tried to get Hudson, he would not take the case. So that's why we used Eric Idy to begin with.
Well, my understanding is.
Mr. Lips don't wanna go, or Mr. Hudson don't wanna go to court.
And I understand, and I know that, that uh Mr. Hudson doesn't, but he does counsel for litigators.
And he was aware.
Anytime you, I mean, you have more intention, anytime you wanna, you have a question.
Yeah.
When this project began, my view should have called him. And we done for, I mean, you guys have done for numerous other things.
Yep.
That I couldn't call him. But.
I think we did call him in originally March. It was way back when, I think that was in fourteen already that we called Hudson and he said he would not represent us in court.
And I understand that he doesn't do it, but he does do counsel, or counsel is, uh, you know? And so my question comes down to where, where, where are we, where are we at in this thing?
Wanna pay more?
You haven't, you know, and I, I brought it up to you, Ryan, a little bit about um, there's uh liability insurance through, there's surety insured bond insurance. Did I have a, I mean, there are a copy, a copy of that and somebody failed our system here. You know?
We have our county attorney.
Maybe got attention.
Well, we have a county attorney sitting back there, I think the board hired an attorney. That attorney left. Then the board hired another attorney to represent us. He ended up in the hospital and so we ended up with a third attorney. I, I don't know that the board could have done anything different.
Didn't start, but it's the, they're saying he didn't get, you know, the person that, somewhere you guys failed, correct, on resetting a notice to Tom?
No, we sent the notices.
Then why did the judge say that the notice was incorrect?
Because it didn't include the attorney fees and.
I thought, I thought basically it said, and he wasn't given three days, finally, he wasn't given three days to fix the problem.
Right.
Now, I, I understand the code of, like, excuse you, the code, the code, that's what the code, one forty-nine basically says.
Yep.
There's three parts to that code, he has to be given three days to fix it. The judge kinda dwelt on that.
Right.
And it wasn't the fact that he wasn't notified, it's just that he wasn't notified of his, giving us three days to fix it.
Correct.
And I, where does that fall on? Cause the supervisors, you take care of our drainage district, correct, you guys are the ones, is that how? Being new to this, I'm just trying to learn how that works, so you look out for what's happening in that drainage district, correct?
Correct.
And so something happened where there was a failure on that side, it sounds like the judge is saying, am I seeing that right? When I read, that's what I beat, you know, I step back to, to procedure. He wasn't.
Correct.
Can we talk to a lawyer, to whoever failed to, I mean, because we're all gonna have a bill, so somebody failed in there, correct? And is that the person that's responsible at the end of the day for taking care of the damages that will be assessed in that district? That's why you have insurance, correct, surety insurance, liability insurance?
I don't know if it covers that.
Well, if you have the attorney.
I, I just came up here, I know about uh five minutes worth of what you're talking about, I've never seen the ruling, I don't really know a lot of the, the nuts and bolts or ins and outs of what you're discussing other than a drainage district issue.
Sorry, he just kind of refers.
I know he referred to me and I, I was not involved in this matter, so I don't know. Uh, you know, as far as what needs to happen from here, um, you know, I, in order for me to provide any type of information or advice, I mean, I would need to be advised of what's going on.
The only thing I can say is that Anton is going to pay and he owns a fair amount, a fair amount of land.
Well, this is, this is that inherited.
And they're, so I mean, they, I mean, the only good thing to get out of the whole thing is he is gonna end up paying.
That isn't gonna help the rest.
It ain't gonna help the rest, no, I understand, I understand that. But we, we, you know, when we get in these situations, we do our due diligence, we hire attorneys and.
But I guess it comes down to my comment on that, we hired an attorney way too late. According to the, according to the court's ruling.
Not really, the court ruling was that it didn't provide.
Because he should have been notified before we even uh had an engineer or before we even hired a one.
I'm not so sure that we didn't have, we had Eric Idy hired before we hired Roland to go out and look at it.
See, I had no idea on that timeline.
Didn't. Yeah.
Was it?
So Eric Idy was in, involved before any of the work was done.
So he missed that or? I don't know, I don't know anything, I mean, is he a drainage lawyer or?
Well, the, the sad thing is there's nobody left to pay but the people that own ground on, in grain seven.
Well, and I understand, but, but it does come back to some, if there is liability insurance, I, as a trustee of the drainage district, I have it.
Yep.
You know, so I kinda understand how it works, understand what it does cover. If we said that we just have a, we did, have a copy, what company is, there's probably two different companies you have with, maybe you have uh surety bond and liability insurance, I don't, I don't know.
We have liability insurance.
So.
But the problem is you have to prove that it was neglectful.
Well, it, it depends how, my understanding is, it depends how it could be written as with airs and emissions, this is, this is, I don't know. If it's written to cover airs and emissions, well then it could be liable.
But then again, you, you know, you talk about having to get attorneys involved again and who knows how many hours it's gonna, it's gonna.
Well, basically, the ruling has already been made by the judge.
Yeah, that's done.
I mean, so, so right there's our proof.
Right, but what you're talking, you're, basically, yeah, basically what you're talking about then is you have, is the drainage district basically suing the board supervisors and, and.
Well.
That's gonna, well, that's the only way you can handle it, I, the only way you can handle it is you'd have to basically, you know, do another lawsuit against us.
Or that attorney.
Or the supervisors, when it be, you guys were at, you guys messed up somehow without getting proper wording. We, this is why we have liability insurance, it's not suing, talk to your liability guy, your insurance guy and find out if anything can happen and transpire through that, correct? That's not.
That's how I look, that's how I look at it, because basically, the insurance company can look at the, at, at the court's ruling in, in court, it was pretty adamant that it was a failure on the board department.
Or the attorney.
Or the attorney. So that's kind of where we're, 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 we're coming at with it.
Mr. Plath, since you were talking about that, can you show me some evidence to all this timing and through how that goes through?
The what's that now?
Evidence to how the documentation of the steps that all this went through.
It's all in the grain file. It'd be all recorded.
So you have to go to the.
Marge, couldn't dig it out, at, at top of our heads, I don't, I can't give you dates. Can you, Marge? It takes, it would take some time to go back and dig, dig out, dig it all up, but it's.
Marge should get back to me on that, I sure.
Marge would have to go back to the rest of some plane though, get that all. Our decision of the day is do we wanna spread grain seven this year or not? And if you don't, you'll have more interest, and it's my opinion, you should spread it this year. And stop the interest on the warrants.
Yeah, we don't, I don't know if the district wants to pay any more interest, I don't.
I don't wanna, I'm in the district, I don't wanna pay any more interest.
Already been twenty-five thousand on interest.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, I've looked at this a lot in last week and I don't, I don't really like leaving it on the bill for another year for interest either, but I don't really feel this district's responsibility because the landowners in the district weren't really involved in this and didn't do anything wrong. I, I don't, I don't know where else money should come from, but.
There is no fairy godmother that pays drainage assessments.
One other thing that ties in with what uh the trustee just said, there's a little bit of um question as to, you know, notice and, and um potential hearing regarding the, you know, with that factor and all these other issues that are coming up, that might yield more towards waiting, although there'd be more interest. I'm a latecomer to the party, I'm not doing that to pass the buck, I, you know, came in to argue the resistance, or to argue the motion and resistance, excuse me. And Tom and I both are latecomers to the party. It's kind of easing out a Monday morning quarterback about what happened two or three or four years ago and what should or shouldn't have happened. There are a lot of moving parts, there is a, these drainage matters. Um, you know, the, the, I don't know, the, the court's one wasn't necessarily critical of one person or one entity, just found that the notice is not sufficient under the code. So, you know, all the discussion about insurance and things like that, I mean, there has to be liability, there has to be negligence, those kind of things. And um I'm not here to advise you on that, I guess I, I'm not seeing that now, would we do things different today? Um, no one will be known now with the judge's ruling, oh, most certainly. And the judge wrote a very thorough ruling, even though we disagree on the, the finding and, and obviously don't wanna be on the losing end of it. Um, in consulting with Tom who has more experience than I do, in my own years of experience, we don't feel that uh appealing this is in the right or in the best interest, it's just going to increase the cost with a, a small or slim chance of anything, slim and none. And so based on the last meeting we entered that the board was not going to appeal it. But with all these issues and discussion today and also maybe an evaluation of any additional notice or, or public hearing that would be required, that might push us into the next, you know, into the next um assessment time. But there's obviously pros and cons and dangers is one potential con, so.
Anybody else have any discussion on grain seven? So you're saying that we should turn that, that ruling over to the insurance company?
I don't, I mean, I'm not suggesting to turn it over to the insurance company because, well, nor- normally if it's play a property and casualty thing, someone has to be responsible for damage. If the professional negligence thing, there has to be professional negligence, I'm not sure that there's anything in that ruling, I'm not evaluating that ruling for, for those issues. My only job was to argue that motion uh to evaluate the, the filing. I'm just suggesting with all the issues that have come up today, one thing would be like the trustee just mentioned, to push this off and evaluate more. The other way is to go forward, like you said, there is a risk, obviously with an argument that additional public notice and hearing or there are other options, I don't know what those are. But this came down in such close proximity to the, you know, to July first here that, you know, there, there's a lot of moving parts. And if the, if you feel like you want more time to evaluate it, that might, you know, push you into, to delay. If you wanna move forward, you can move forward and continue to evaluate whether there are other options or whether or not we need um to look at other, you know, notice and hearing, those kind of things, or you can wait and um evaluate it based on what's happened today, those are your two options. But I understand we're not appealing, and that was the, the primary discussion.
Yesterday I got the numbers from Marg. She had already provided them today, but the total litigation attorney fees to date with interest is just shy of eighteen thousand. So, I mean, if we wanted to separate something out, I think we should assess that at least because, um, you'd minimize the interest on that. And it's probably not going to be recoverable, I would imagine, but I don't, I don't know about the repair side of it. That was eighty-six thousand.
When, what date was the first attorney bill?
I don't have that as a paper with me.
I don't have that, yes, me.
I think the original. Eight, one, fifty, thirty, this has been, the credit balance is eighty-six thousand dollars for fixing.
So that'd be, that'd be construction, engineering and interest for all these years.
The eighty-six thousand?
Yeah, because then in the decision it had sixteen, seventeen something here listed as the cost. Let me find it.
I haven't run the numbers to see if we dropped into the repair public hearing requirement or not. I didn't.
The original amount was sixty-six, three, seventy-seven, twenty-five. Plus fifteen oh five for legal fees and a little over eight thousand in interest at that time. But the ass- assessment amount was seventy-five, nine oh four.
Um, Mr. Stecker, do you happen to have the, like the, the engineering fee, that dollar on? It seems to, for another.
Yeah, we have that listed out. I don't have it handy in front of me, but.
What was that change?
I was, I was asking what the engineering fee was on that because I saw on that paper, uh, today, this morning, there was thirty thousand to fix it. But you're charged eighty. I'm just wondering. So I'm, I'm new to this, so I'm just really, you know, gassed at what, uh, is being charged there.
It probably wasn't that thirty thousand ballpark initially, off the top of my head.
I don't, I don't have it listed here, but.
They accepted the bid of thirty thousand, nine seventy.
Yeah.
But I'm asking you about the, the engineering fees.
The engineering fee was probably more than the repair.
Are you guys taking, taking care of our district?
That's, we follow the code there. You hire an engineer anytime you spend money.
Does this happen, all this, I think, because it's county?
Yep. You'll have to change the state law if you want to change that.
The, the smaller projects that get engineered, the engineering's disproportionate to them.
Well, I just, I, I, I'm speaking up on behalf of the land that we have in the same district right next to you and I, I've never learned, maybe, this is the first I've ever dealt with, you know, tiles broke, district fixes it, everybody, that's fine, but somebody screws up and now you get close to forty thousand engineering fees?
Yeah.
I'm going back to the, it comes back to one forty-nine, four sixty, that, that the judge kept calling, he kept walking from that and that was in his rule class. Well, that wouldn't have to happen before we even hired the engineer. Is that correct?
No.
Because we would have had it more before we hired A1 because according to the court, we would have given three days to fix that. Is that correct?
The rule? Yeah.
So that would have happened before, before we even had, uh, A1 cut out bits, that Tom would have had been notified. And we didn't have lips until, uh, on, or, or, even until.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, eighteen. Well, we go, we're gonna go, we're gonna go back ahead of that. According to the ruling in one forty-nine and section four, six, eight, one forty-nine. Tom would have had have been notified before you even had a bid going, so that he could fix it.
He, yeah, he was sent a letter along with the code regulations.
In twenty fifteen.
And you remember we had Adele's out there looking at it too?
Had who?
Adele's, Iowa Department of Land.
That was, that was the first time he's prayed to look at it.
Right.
Was that brought up, Court may ask?
Yes, it was in the findings.
It was, okay, because that would have been a few years before this.
That was in like fourteen. That was before I was even.
Time, that was a whole different incident, actually.
Yeah, that was, yeah. But he was notified then the same way.
But it didn't go to court?
No, and he didn't do anything either.
He didn't do anything. I mean, I just speak spoken at that time, but the way I read, well, maybe I disagree, but I read, read one law and he would have had have been whenever we first decided that. Because he did it not only in sixteen, but then he did it in section seven, or about, not only seventeen, but he also did it in section sixteen, because they acquired that land in between. And, uh, then, and that's what the judge found was him. That's where we, the board went wrong is they didn't notify him before we had A1 fix it. You know, we had, give him an opportunity to fix it. I think that's in point three of one forty-nine.
At, at the bottom of page six in the ruling, it says, "The September twentieth, twenty seventeen letter, South County's Attorney Eric Idi is similarly deficient and ineffective like the Act over twenty fifteen letter. It contains too little information with insufficient detail in regard to notice, abatement, damages, costs and assessment to demonstrate substantial compliance with the section four sixty-eight, one forty-nine's notice provisions. It contains a code section which Tom could prosecute in case of future violations, but it is the wrong code section."
But that's what the judge in county has handled, and that's where we were deficient. And if we had, had talked to our grain's attorney, granted he wasn't, uh, framed to court, but he could have advised you at least. Uh, they had no time. And I don't know, I don't, there's no record of ever paying, uh, Mr. Hudson.
Don't know, it's hard. We've had Mr. Hudson when he didn't bill us, we've talked, right?
So, so who knows, you know?
Yeah, and it's, my memory, my memory doesn't.
So is this a common practice that you send these notices out to individuals in your districts through a lawyer? Because South County's been around quite a long time. Why was this one insufficient, as it says in there, to Mr. Anton? Why are we putting our faith in, you know, was this lawyer from outgoing to South County? Where did we find this lawyer?
For Irish, yeah.
Probably one of the few things that went to court.
W- we had never, ever had anybody do damage to a dredged ditch like this before in the county. This is the first. And we'd never experienced, I'm gonna say, Mr. Idi did an excellent job of other stuff for the county, but he evidently missed on this one.
Seems like a hundred dollar I've been failed to make on behalf of D D seven, now that I start to hear the information. This is.
I think we were all aware that we might not win this case when we started it.
The evidence, let's put it this way, the evidence was very strong.
The evidence. Yeah.
Uh, we were gonna win on the evidence. It was procedure.
Yeah.
We as a district had no control over procedure. And that's where the errors and omissions, liability comes in at. And, um, that's why, that's why I bring that up. And we're, we're, we're individuals. You're the trustees of the district. You're the trustees of the district. As individuals, we're limited to what we can probably do. We could act individually, but I can't act unindividually. And that's why we're kind of caught in this liability issue a little bit. You guys probably don't want to turn it into your liability company.
Say, this is Dave Stein. I'm having a really hard time hearing, but I understand that there is frustration regarding the ruling. And it's easy to Monday morning quarterback saying, uh, Mr. Idi or Edie and Mr. Lips are actual attorneys. The facts were baked into the case before Mr. Lips got involved, but I'm not being critical of Mr. Idi or the board or anybody else. The strange stuff's highly technical and there's always some little nuance. You know, there, there's a reason why only a few people in the state are getting involved in these cases or advising the boards. It's highly technical and things could go different ways when you go to court. And we don't always, if, if the standard was good to win every case or there was a problem, then I guess we all have a problem, so. I mean, my understanding from our last discussion was that the board was not appealing the ruling. And then the second issue is, okay, what about the assessment? I haven't crunched the numbers on this to find out, you know, there's a, on the repair side, there's a notice and public hearing requirement, and I don't remember off the top of my head, because I was a latecomer to the party, whether that ever happened with the repair. So that's one thing that if we wanted to be sure, that would maybe dictate toward pushing this off. These other questions that were raised today that would probably be maybe better answered by Mr. Lips as far as the historical background would be another reason to push it off. You know, the other way is to go forward and realize that there may be either appeals or questions or we may have to amend or change some things going forward, depending on how those numbers crunch out versus the code sections involved. Um, I, I've got some other, I've got to be involved in something else here. It's unanimous. I want to make that the priority of the day. Um, so that we could, could move forward, but my understanding is that I'm not under any obligation to file a notice of appeal, which is the number one most critical thing, unless, you know, the board has changed its mind on that. Um, you know, that's our recommendation, Tom's recommendation in mind to not appeal that decision. And then the second part of it is going to be a board decision. And, you know, if you need more time to, um, crunch those numbers, look at the repair, uh, public hearing or look into these other issues that, uh, landowners are raising today before you make a decision. You know, that would probably lead you more toward a delay or short delay on, um, making a decision on the rest of it. So I just want to make sure I'm clear before I drop off where we're at.
I guess as far as the appeal, I, I would keep my decision to the last because I don't think we have a chance to win anything for.
And as far as putting off the assessment schedule on the bill. I don't think there's much use in it. All you're gonna do is pay more interest. If you can, if you guys think we should hire, or you should, the district should hire an attorney to see if somebody was neglectful. That's a decision that you can make right now, if you find, if you think you're the majority. Otherwise, I'm going to move that we put the assessment on the fall schedule for twenty twenty-two and get it spread to the landowners and stop the interest. The pain isn't going to get any better.
I'm, I'm not against spreading, you know, it, I'm not against that at all, Roger, and there's no need to go back to the, the judge, you know. Uh, I'm, the only thing I'm really bringing up here is, is the liability part.
Yeah.
You know, as I read the court, the case several times, I s- I see some liability here.
Do you want us to hire an attorney?
Uh, do we have to hire an attorney? That's my question.
You aren't gonna get anywhere without doing that.
I don't know. I, I mean, because I, I just.
You want us to turn it over to the insurance company then?
Turn it over to the insurance?
Okay, we will try.
Because, uh, I'll tell you what, I mean, basically, given the ruling right here, they, they can read for themselves.
Yeah.
You know, um, file a payment, I mean.
But, my motion?
That's my, that's my.
Okay, but the first thing I'm gonna do is make a motion to spread the cost on D D seven for the fall assessment of twenty twenty-two.
What, what dollar amount?
Total. The hundred, what is the total, Mark? One twenty-two? The total amount.
Now, it's the total of a hundred and twenty-two thousand?
Are you gonna give the product as an option away that you have, you have the ability to?
I'm gonna hurry up and be more, you know, here in the house. Well, when you're talking, it's less than a hundred, so I, it's good to be.
That's what, that's everything.
Interesting.
It was, wasn't it like one seventeen something?
Yeah, it's close to one seventeen, the coverage.
We can't have a negative balance in the grain accounts.
The district isn't paying for any of the time put in by the order of the office?
No.
No.
Okay. Do you have a, a correct acre on that hundred and twenty-two thou? Do you know the exact number, a hundred and twenty-two thousand?
I got the spread up here. Marg, the spread on the total amount.
Five thousand.
Five thousand, three hundred and five acres and six acres.
Say, this is Dave Stein. I need to drop off. I'll just, I guess I'll leave you with this. Number one, I understand we're not appealing. And number two, whichever way you go, understand that there could be, you know, different, various challenges regarding the assessment of costs and fees here. Uh, including a notice and, and public hearing, those kind of things. So I understand you're looking at some other things regarding interest. Um, the decision's up to you. There is some risk either way. And then the third thing is, I guess, for a review of this. Um, you know, Mr. Lips has a better understanding of the, of the facts, um, you know, more the historical facts, but I guess I have a hard time, I've done this for over twenty years and it's representing municipalities and, and different entities. And it's always easy to say someone did this wrong or did this wrong. Um, the facts were kind of baked in by the time Mr. Lips and I got involved, but you certainly can have someone else review it. You can do whatever you determine necessary, but again, um, you know, if every time I lost a case or someone lost a case, they were deemed negligent, that would be, you know, that, there wouldn't be a whole lot of attorneys around, so, um, you certainly have the right to do that. Um, you've got a county that can do more in a general sense and he can look at it. You could certainly talk to your carrier. I guess I'm kind of scratching my head a little bit about that, but, um, let me know and maybe Marg can reach out to me afterwards, let me know kind of the final breakdown and I appreciate you letting me up my phone today for this matter and, and if anybody has any questions, let me know.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Have a good day.
Yep. So again, we have to move forward. I made a motion to spread the assessment for the fall of twenty twenty-two and stop the interest. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Plath. Now, do we have any more discussion?
Is that what the landlords leave, want us to do, stop, get, get the interest stopped?
Yeah.
Some landlords could be a little strapped to, put like a waiver, so that they could waive it, just, you know, like you do on some repair project, I think you have the right to do. You know, if you got somebody that can't pay their full amount, they don't want to go to the bank, you could, you could, they keep paying. you could, you could, they keep paying the interest.
They'll still pay in the interest.
That's their option, but I would give them that option, you know? If they want to take it. That's up to you guys, but I think you could do that.
Are you including that in your motion?
No, we'll do one motion at a time. We'll, we'll bring that up next. Do a roll call vote on the motion, please.
I don't know if I'm going to abstain.
Casey?
Yes.
Doc?
Yes.
Plath?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried, forty-one. Next, do I have a motion to issue waivers for the assessment for D.D. seven for the fall of 2022? Mr. Stecker moves to waive, how long? Ten years? At five percent interest, keep it.
At least it'd be an option for them.
Any more discussion?
Let's go back to the insurance. As you as trustees of the district.
We, we have to.
We, we got to do this first.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
So I have a motion by Mr. Stecker to, to issue a waiver for ten years at five percent. Do I have a second to his motion? I'll second this motion. Do a roll call vote.
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
Plath?
Yes.
Plath?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
That took, send the ruling to our insurance company. I have a motion by Mr. Plath to send the ruling to our insurance company. I will second Mr. Plath's motion. Do I have any discussion on it? Hearing none. Do a roll call vote, please.
Stecker?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
Plath?
Yes.
Plath?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that ends D.D. seven.
We have copies of those transactions that the county, whatever, have.
Marge is going to have to compile all that. That's all in the drainage record.
I mean, as far, I think, right, I mean, talking about even what's sent to the insurance companies, names of your insurance companies' policies. I mean, that's public.
We'll have to, we'll have to find it.
Make a request at the auditors' office for that.
See what comes out of that.
On our part, nothing ventured, nothing gained. I mean, for a bunch of, a group of people that are pretty innocent.
I don't know. This is my first thing. I think it's, I mean, people looking out for our district and look out for our district in a proper way, I believe. As the more I've listened to today, and it's kind of disappointing.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't agree with that. I mean, we, we did our due diligence. We hired an attorney, and the attorney did what we, you know, what he was supposed to. And, uh, the court, the court didn't, the court didn't agree with, uh, with the process.
The attorney's fault.
That'd be another option, I guess.
And that's the point, if it is an attorney's fault, you know?
I don't.
It's attorney to insurance.
I don't know. I mean, I don't know how that works in, in Iowa.
Well, is.
Does that fall under the no-fault rule in Iowa, Todd, comes to attorneys?
No fault?
What do you, what do you have?
Yeah, I think it's, all attorneys who are licensed in Iowa are obligated to have errors and omissions or what we call now practice insurance, so.
Okay, well, we'll have to have a discussion. Yeah, we can, I guess we'll have to have a discussion with Eric E.D. about, you know, about the case too.
Send it to his insurance too?
Well, can't send it to his insurance. We'd have to have a discussion with him first. Well, I think.
Well, I've taken enough of your time. Uh, can you, all those documents, the timeline, where would I find those exactly? Or, Mr. Plath, you were going to talk about getting those. How would I go about getting them?
Make a request at the auditors' office, and then contact information, so as to get that for you.
All right. And a copy of this, we're going to turn to you, or do, can I keep a copy of this?
That?
Yes.
That was my copy. If you want one, she'll run one off for you.
May I approach again?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anybody can find out what their assessment is going to be.
Don't let yourself say anything.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for your time.
Yeah, thanks. We are up to pay estimate number three on try eighty-four on finger repairs.
Oh, we got that thing, Todd.
We'll do that nine.
That nine.
Are you ready, Todd?
Well, I mean, if there's others in front of me, I can go. I didn't know.
We can, we can jump back to that. We don't want to kill your time.
Here, I'm here all the time, so.
No, we don't want to kill your time.
No, I mean, seriously, I don't know if there's, you know, okay.
On your advice, we are going to go into closed session.
Yeah, based on twenty-one point five, uh, sub one, sub J, to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate only where premature disclosure could recently be expected to increase the price the government body would have to pay for that property or reduce the price the government body would receive for that property.
Do I have a motion to go into closed session? So, motion by Plath, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lass. Roll call vote, please.
Stecker?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
Plath?
Yes.
Plath?
Yes.
Jerks?
Motion carried a hundred percent. Close the doors.